Hello and welcome to a conversation on the daily burn. I'm your host Eric Miller, joined today by an awesome, bold, young, progressive leader from the great state of Massachusetts, Madeline Rinaldi. How you doing, Madeline?
Hi, great. Thanks for having me.
Thanks for taking some time to chat with me. May I call you Maddie?
Yes, you can.
Okay, great. So you are running for city council in Newton, Massachusetts. I first came across your profile, a friend of mine that I know from the gun violence prevention movement had donated and shared and said, you know, Maddie's stellar, go check her out. And I did, and she was right. Of course she was, you know, so I invited you on. I want to talk about your, your campaign, your platform. A lot of your activism and advocacy, you've been doing a lot of work, you know, even though you're, you know, you're younger than I, shall we say. I want to get into all that, but there's, you know, there's news of the day, which I think is in your neighborhood. Another police shooting in Newton Highlands. Can you, I mean, it just happened like hours ago, I think, right? Can you tell us what you know about that so far?
Yeah, so we're still uncovering a lot of the details about what happened, but I think around 2:30 or 3:00 PM, there was a police shooting in Newton Highlands, which is not where I live. It's a little further away. But because it's an at-large seat, it is sort of within the district and the city. Essentially what we know, and we're still finding out more information, was a man by the name of Mike, entered a candy store below his apartment, told the owner he was off his medication, clearly showed signs of a mental health crisis, had a knife with him and then went back upstairs to his apartment, where police shot him through the door six times. And we just received news about 15 minutes ago that he passed away in the hospital. And we are, I believe a press conference is just starting now from the police department on precisely what happened. But yeah, we're still trying to figure it all out and make sense of it. I think it's really frustrating and disheartening. As somebody who, you know, has been advocating for, for a long while for, you know, an end to police violence in, in Newton, I think it's an issue that a lot of people pretend doesn't happen here as if we're somehow exempt from a, a national context of police violence. And I think perhaps the most devastating part was that the police were advised to call a crisis negotiator, who is a third party that can be called to come in in times of distress, mental health crises and sort of de-escalate. But those people were never called. They never came. And to think that should someone, you know, have like that have shown up, he probably would have been alive is really, really tragic. And I think sheds a lot of light on the ways that law enforcement are ill-equipped to deal with issues of mental health crises. And how in a lot of situations, this one is an example, tend to exacerbate the harm instead of making it better. And so we're still trying to figure out what has happened and provide support in any way we can. But yeah, it's sort of just broken. We're, we're dealing with it now.
Yeah, here, here. Thanks for sharing that. And it's, um, you know, we don't want to jump to any conclusions, but it, you know, based on the initial information, it really appears like just one of those examples, like you said, where a wellness check would have, you know, prevented, you know, another murder, right? Basically at the hands of those that are to protect the service, right? So, you know, this is, you know, I looked at your Twitter and stuff and you follow defund the police and Newton and so forth. And, you know, there's a lot of pushback around that phrase versus what we're actually fighting for, right? And, you know, this is an example. This man could still be alive, right? And, you know, clear, you know, the police aren't supposed to kill guilty people either, right? We know that.
Right.
Right? So, um, yeah, and, you know, made even more underscored by the fact that Jacob Blake.
Yeah, comes right in the wake of that ruling.
Just today. Yeah, it's just, man, it just never ends. So we'll be watching that story. I want to ask a little bit, obviously, you know, Newton has, you know, a national profile because of Sandy Hook, right? And I know you've been active.
Oh, that's actually Newtown, Connecticut.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
So not quite, no.
Yeah. Okay, good. So thanks for clarifying. But you've, you've been active in, in March for Our Lives and gun violence prevention. Can you talk about, you know, what, what drew you into that and what sort of activated you politically?
Yeah, of course. So, I mean, I grew up very politically engaged. I, both my parents were newspaper journalists. And so as any child of journalists knows, you don't have a choice when it comes to community engagement and public service. And I grew up around that and, you know, whether it was through the temple we attended or neighborhood sort of association events here where we, where we live. I was always just sort of involved and engaged with the people around me. And then as I got older, that started to morph into political advocacy. And I always sort of knew that I like enjoyed public service and government and things like that. And then the Parkland shooting was a big catalyst for me. And I know a lot of other young people in really becoming politically involved for the first time with sort of the huge March for Our Lives. And then sort of the creation of the March for Our Lives organization and gun violence prevention movement. And so I, I knew that this was something that I wanted to get involved in. And so I joined sort of the Massachusetts chapter and did this amazing 50 mile march in the summer of 2018. From Worcester, Massachusetts to Springfield, which was 50 miles. And it was in protest to the Smith and Wesson gun, gun manufacturer, which is headquartered in Springfield, Massachusetts, specifically because they produce firearms that are illegal here in Massachusetts, assault rifles that we deem too dangerous for people to carry here. But they ship them out of state and, you know, Smith and Wesson assault rifles were used in Parkland and Aurora in San Bernardino. And it was this big protest about, you know, how can we, like in good conscience, you know, deem these weapons unsafe for ourselves, but think that, you know, shipping them to other states is okay. And that was probably a huge moment for me when I knew like this is what I wanted to be a part of. And so for the past sort of two and a half years, I think it is now, I've been the political director for March for Our Lives Massachusetts, which is the Massachusetts sort of, sort of arm of March for Our Lives. And I've worked mostly on the state level, so advocating for all sorts of gun violence prevention legislation. And ultimately that's what I, you know, knew I could bring, you know, I was like, I am good at sort of being strategic and thinking about legislators and support and how we could potentially build a coalition to get something through. And so I knew that legislative advocacy was where I would sort of play my biggest part. And so we've done a lot of work on just such a wide variety of bills. We've done extreme risk protection order, which is also known as a red flag law. We fought for funding for violence intervention programs because a lot of gun violence here in Massachusetts doesn't look like white suburban school shootings. It looks like, you know, neighborhood violence in communities of color. And, you know, those same solutions that you think would fix those suburban school shootings aren't going to fix a lot of the violence here in Massachusetts. So I've learned a lot along the way and have advocated for, you know, a lot of different solutions. And most recently I have sat on the board of the Mass Coalition to Prevent Gun Violence, which is sort of a multi-generational group of all sorts of groups across the state who are all sort of bound by this shared goal of preventing gun violence here in Massachusetts, which has also been really incredible. And I think, you know, without March for Our Lives or gun violence prevention organizing, I wouldn't be running for political office right now. Um, I think, one more thing and then I'll, I'll be quiet, but I think.
I'll be quiet. Please keep going.
March for Our Lives specifically. And it's sort of unapologetically youth-led culture is extremely powerful. And there is this nature of, that's sort of embedded in everything you do that sort of shows you that young people are, are ready to take the reins right now and they're ready to make change now. And they're, they don't need to wait for permission five, 10, 15 years from now, you know, we're prepared and we're knowledgeable enough to do it. And I think that is what made me feel like, oh, I could run for office now, you know, I don't need to run in 10 or 20 years when I finally get asked. And I think without sort of that political advocacy experience and learning how to do a lot of, you know, of that work at a very young age, I, I wouldn't be sitting here and really, you know, taking this on. So, yeah.
Wow, that's so, that's so inspiring to hear. Thank you for, thank you for that. I, you know, I went to the March for Our Lives event in DC and it's actually one of the photos in my opening video when Emma did just stop talking and the silence washed over the crowd. One of the most powerful things I've ever personally seen. And, you know, it's the youth angle of it that is infinitely inspiring. So I'm glad that you said that. And I'm glad that, you know, it motivated you to run for office, hopefully the first of many, right? So, um, you know, I, you know, I wonder, um, and there's also the sunrise movement, you know,
Yes, totally.
Equally inspiring. Can you, can you, you know, I mentioned Sandy Hook errantly, you know, the wrong town, but you definitely grew up in that generation of having active shooter drills in your school, right? I didn't have that, but you know, that, that's traumatizing, no?
Yeah, totally.
Your generation has grown up, you know, at war your whole life, right? You know, you know, mountains of student debt and so forth, right? Climate change, all of these pressures that, you know, just have these terrible issues that have been dumped on your generation, right? You know, and not that you're necessarily a spokesman for your generation or whatever, but, you know, what kind of perspective can, what does that feel like, right? That's how, you know, how do you, how do you fight through that with optimism and, you know, and, uh, you know, vigor?
Yeah, I think so. You're right. Like I am, I'm one person and I'm, I'm one person, but I think I definitely have noticed this sort of collective consciousness among Gen Z and this sort of just young activist generation of just sort of growing up, knowing that there are a lot of very big problems that are put on our shoulders and having that never really go away. And that can be said for so many issues, you know, like we see it on climate, gun violence prevention, racial justice, so many things where it's very sort of clear and present all the time, this pressure to make sure that we sort of correct and, and sort of build a world that is much more equitable than the one we were brought up in. I think the optimism and the hope comes from just an absence of choice because it's either, you know, you say, okay, I, you know, we have to, we have to make this better, like what, what's the alternative?
Right.
And so I think finding that collective strength in each other and sort of being bound by this shared, you know, identity of, you know, needing to fix these problems is really big. I would also just say though, like my experience as a, as a white teenager in a very affluent town is very different from a lot of other members of my generation. And I think that experience is not to be, you know, discounted. If anything, it's to be amplified and highlighted in all the work we do, but I think definitely our generation knows sort of not just what needs to be done, but has the power to actually do it right now. And I think has been able very effectively to call out a lot of the very sort of patronizing rhetoric of, oh, young people are the future. Young people are so great. I wish they were more politically engaged, blah, blah, blah. And be like, that's bullshit. Like we're, we're here and we're engaged right now. You have to listen to us and actually award us the power and, and like listen to the demands. And then, you know, like, you know, like then the good things will happen. And sort of have taken on this mantra of like, young people are not the future. We're the right now. And I think that's the, that's the strength that I think is driving me. It's driving a lot of young candidates who are running for office. And I think is sort of the hope that gets us through, you know, a lot of the hard times, you know, knowing that there's, there's a better world on the other side.
Love that so much. Thank you. Uh, you know, I want to pull up, uh, I want to get to your policy a little bit, which is all thanks to what you just said right there. You know, you pretty much tick all the progressive boxes policy-wise, but, you know, obviously you don't take corporate PAC money. You're not funded by Smith and Wesson and, you know, Chevron and, uh, you know, Johnson, Johnson, so forth. So Madeline needs donations, right? So rinaldi4newton.com is her website. There's a nice little donate button right there. There's a how to help, which is really great. So, you know, you can sign up and, you know, send texts, you know, do some phone banking and so forth, right? The election is, this is an open seat. Does that, do you?
Yes. So the circumstances of this election are very complicated. The election will be March 16th. Yes.
Okay. Is there, so there's no, do you have a challenger at all?
So I do, yeah. Um, and yeah, it's a little complicated. I was initially going to run in November of next year and challenge one of my sitting city councillors. And he actually tragically passed away a couple of months ago, very suddenly. So the city called a special election for this seat as well as the seat on the council that was vacated. By, I don't know if you know Jake Auchincloss, who just won the seat, the Massachusetts 4th congressional district. So there are two open seats and it has kind of been like a Georgia situation, which is incredibly relevant because today is the Georgia election, where it has sort of become two teams of two. And I am running sort of with a buddy who is running for the other seat. We're not like a ticket or a formal, like, you know, or anything like that. But just because, you know, we align very, you know, clearly ideologically and so do our opponents. It made sense to, you know, not waste, you know, resources and make efficient use of the time we have because it's so limited. So yeah, we had to compress about, I think, 11 months of campaigning into about three and a half or four, which has been very interesting.
During a pandemic, no less.
Right. Totally unlike anything we've ever experienced. We just got sort of news recently that we'll have vote by mail and early voting, which is reassuring. But yeah, we just have no way really of predicting, you know, what this is going to be like, what turnout will be, but you know, we're just going to do our thing and get out the vote as best we can.
Right on. And the, the, uh, your buddy, what's his name?
Yeah. So the candidate running for the ward two seat, so I'm running for the ward one seat. His name is Brian Bearish. He's another progressive and him and I are sharing, you know, a lot of resources and things like that, just to make sure we're making efficient use of everything.
Excellent. So go check him out as well. Awesome. So, you know, I want to get a little bit into your platform, right? So you have your priorities here and they're all fantastic. So, you know, let's just start with, you know, since we mentioned sunrise movement and so forth. You know, that's a, you know, that's a global and a local issue, right? So, you know, foregoing the, the global perspective of it at this point, you know, locally for Newton, what is your climate action plan look like to do?
Yeah. So I think the sort of the, the way that I sort of outline a lot of my policy proposals is under this sort of idea that Newton is a city that loves to espouse values of inclusivity and progressivism and diversity and things like that. But when it comes to really making bold decisions and setting examples for other cities and towns, you know, we fail to walk the walk. And so I think on climate, there are so many examples of where our city can really step up and do more and make bold decisions. So our city has this climate action plan that was unanimously voted into existence. It gets us to neutrality by, uh, carbon neutrality by 2050. I believe you need to get there sooner because, I mean, if an affluent white suburb like Newton can't get to carbon net neutrality by 2050, there is no hope for anybody else. But in addition to that, it looks like, you know, investing in green transit, making it easier for people to walk and bike. It looks like a hopefully fingers crossed upon the passage of this bill that just passed the Massachusetts State House. You know, investing in a net zero stretch energy code to allow us to, you know, build solar on municipal buildings. And invest in energy efficient net zero buildings. It looks like sustainable facility upgrades, whether that's for schools or other, you know, public buildings. And it really looks like using, you know, every tool in our toolbox to constantly push ourselves to invest in renewables, efficiency, making sure that we sort of don't leave any stone unturned. Because we are lucky to be a well-resourced city with a lot of people who care about the environment. And we, you know, have to take advantage of that sort of at every, at every point we can.
Excellent. You mentioned green transportation in there. I know that's a plank that you break out a little bit. Can you talk about public transportation and how you would like to, you know, build formation of that in terms of?
So public transit is, is interesting in Newton. I think a lot of it, you know, we have the MBTA, which is the Mass Hall, Massachusetts sort of transit authority. And so a lot of those solutions will have to come from collaboration with neighboring cities and towns, lobbying on the state level, that sort of thing. But there are so many ways that our city can improve in terms of public transit. I think, so we have these train lines and they are sort of unevenly spread out within the city. And they don't offer sort of quick enough service that make people feel like it's worth taking, which is really frustrating because if you make it easier and incentivize people to take a car, they'll drive a car. And, you know, it means, you know, more frequent bus service. It's, so I live in sort of the northern tip of Newton in a village called Nonantum, which is historically an Italian immigrant neighborhood. And it's also sort of socio-economically at the lower end of where the rest of Newton is. And we don't have, you know, a, a bus line or something that gets us into the hubs of Boston and Cambridge and things like that. If people in my neighborhood want to go into Boston or something like that, they have to go to a neighboring town called Watertown and take that bus to Cambridge. And so just a lack sort of a thoughtfulness and just making sure that transit is distributed equitably is really important to me. I also think on green transit, like we should be investing obviously in EV infrastructure, making it easier for people to drive electric. But more than anything, it needs to people, it needs to be easier for people to get around without a car. And I think Newton has 13 villages with 13 village centers, which sort of have shops, offices, restaurants, cafes, that sort of thing. And making sure those are as walkable and bikeable as possible is incredibly important because if people, if you generate what are called these 15-minute neighborhoods where people can run sort of a series of errands without needing a car and being able to do that all, they skip the trip. And almost 40% of Newton's greenhouse gas emissions come from transportation, primarily cars. And I think just making sure people have the option and the agency to go without a car is really, really important.
Yeah. Amazing. You mentioned those, uh, those town hubs, right? The, uh, and the small businesses there, you know, that's another thing. There was, uh, the newly elected speaker of the house in Massachusetts. When asked about the COVID vaccine rollout, I, I don't know. I just got here, right? You know, so can you talk about how disastrous that is? But also, also your COVID recovery plan, you know, into small businesses?
Absolutely. So I think first on that, on that video, I think that is probably one of the most frustrating things. That, you know, this, that Massachusetts State House is notorious for a lack of transparency. And it's really frustrating because it means that progressive change either doesn't happen or when it happens, it's extremely watered down. And I think the whole point of when Mariano, who's the current, you know, now the speaker of the house was sort of rushed through very quickly. Everyone was supposed to be okay with it because he's been in office longer than I've been alive. He, you know, knows what he's doing. He's experienced. And the fact that during a global pandemic, when vaccine rollout is the thing that will get us back in school, will get businesses back up and running, will get, you know, people back to some sense of normalcy. If your response is, I don't know, you have no business serving in public office. Specifically in Newton. Recovery from COVID-19 is incredibly important. And it has to happen in a variety of different ways. I think on local businesses, where Newton has particularly struggled is in helping local restaurants. We watched throughout the spring and the summer, neighboring cities and towns take steps to help local restaurants, whether it was closing roads and allowing for outdoor dining or, you know, completely cutting liquor license fees or, or all these things. And we were just hesitant to take any step. I was lobbying at the liquor licensing board for a 50% cut of, of the licenses for the year, which thankfully went through. That's the only relief that restaurants have gotten. And sort of concerns about short-term fiscal irresponsibility got in people's way of understanding the long-term impacts of losing a business. And sort of a local business that is the heart of our community, that contributes to our commercial tax base, that, you know, means a lot to the people of, of that neighborhood. And I think.
Come back.
Right. It might, it, you know, they won't come back. And, and that's really, you know, frustrating to see opportunities passed up. And so I think now we owe it, you know, to provide any and all relief that we can, especially hopefully as we help, you know, them struggle through the winter and hopefully as we get warmer, really making sure that, you know, businesses are able to stay open. COVID recovery takes so many other things too. You know, our schools are perhaps probably the most controversial area of COVID recovery in Newton right now. It's really frustrating to see again, Newton sat by and watched neighboring cities and towns employ a lot of their public health experts to come up with standards and criteria for when we would be in person, when we would be hybrid, what the, you know, rate of positivity and infection would need to be. We didn't do that. Instead, we did probably the opposite of what we should have done, which was what we asked families and parents what they wanted before we decided what we could do. And then we were closed while other schools were able to be open. And now we're opening to hybrid when it is perhaps the most dangerous time to be doing that. And sort of a lack of care and a lack of planning unfortunately plagued a lot of our response. And I think I'm, you know, hoping that once, you know, if elected, we take a really long, hard look at where we went wrong. And, and how we could, you know, God forbid, in a future crisis like this, do a lot better job planning ahead, making sure people had the support and the resources they need, whether it was for, you know, if they owned a business, if they were renters. You know, so many things where people needed support and we didn't get it. And I think just lastly, I think it's, you know, impossible to understate the lack of support from the state and the federal government that left local governments to go it alone, um, who were already, you know, cash strapped, did not have money to give people, which was really frustrating. And I think, you know, as a local official, it's no one's job to make excuses. But I think, you know, without adequate state and federal support, you know, local governments can't keep public buildings open. They can't keep kids in school. They can't, you know, provide people who are renting, you know, the protections they need. It's just not possible. And so I think that is also something that went horribly wrong and that I think, you know, needs to start kicking in.
Yeah. And then just to clarify that when he said, I don't know, just to go back to that, it wasn't, I don't know yet. And I let me research and get back to, it was like a defiant, like how dare you arrest me?
Yeah.
Right. It was, it was like, there was a smugness to it, you know, compared to Maddie who was fighting this fight, not holding public office, right? You mentioned the 50% liquor board thing, right? Like that, that's just a private citizen moving, right? Trying to fight for good. Like how blessed would Newton be to get Maddie elected, right? So, you know, versus the speaker of the house who's just flippant, right? About something so critically important as vaccination, right? So, um, you know, again, it's a rinaldi4newton.com. Please make a donation. Go like her socials, share this video. You know, volunteer to phone bank, make some calls. Let's talk a little bit more about, you know, let's see what else is on your platform. One of the things that, that I appreciated, there's two things on there, right? Sort of investing in youth and caring for the senior citizens, right? Sort of getting involved in, can you talk about those two things, including lowering, lowering the voting age? Can you talk about that?
Yes, of course. So I'll speak first to youth issues. Because I think as a young person running for office, I know that, you know, politicians everywhere lament, you know, low levels of participation for young people. And the way you engage young people is not, you know, by asking them to vote, not by like making cool social media posts. How you do that is by advocating for policies that young people need and advocating for the things that they need. And in Newton, you know, that hasn't happened because a super majority of our city council is over 50. And there's no one to raise those concerns because they don't experience them. And so I'm hoping to bring to the table a lot of issues that youth in our city are advocating for. They're just not being listened to. And so there's a push in Newton to lower our municipal voting age to 16, which was an operation that was sort of undertaken a few years ago by other neighboring communities. This bill that unfortunately didn't pass the state house, but we're preparing to file a home rule petition with the Massachusetts State House to allow us to lower our municipal voting age, which is really important. I think adults tend to discount it as some like, oh, that's nice. Like they want to vote cute. But it's a lot more than that. More than anything, you, young people don't vote because structurally it's very hard to make good voting habits. When you turn 18, you know, you have to, you're immediately tasked with the decision. If you go to school, do you vote at home or do you absentee where you go to school? It's incredibly hard to generate good, consistent levels of participation, which research has shown means that you vote more and more as you get older. So that's a first, you know, big piece. I think also it's about building a city that's conducive to young people moving around. You know, like if you're under, you know, if you don't have a license, you bike and you walk. And we don't have enough protected bike lanes, especially on routes to school that are really dangerous and, you know, affect young people's ability to congregate and meet, especially as we're in a pandemic and open space is probably the only place you have to congregate outside with people. And finally, I think mental health resources is a big one. I think the, you know, police shooting today is a textbook example of how when a city underfunds health and human services, mental health, youth services and things that really provide public safety and life-affirming services, bad things can happen. And so I think this is something young people have called for in our city for a long time. We're lucky to have a youth commission that has undertaken so many projects to, you know, collect data from schools about what students are struggling with and what they need, you know, additional counselors and things like that. So those are issues that I'm excited, excited to bring to the table that are just not getting discussed because there's no one there to bring them up. And then on issues of helping our senior population.
Can I interject? Before you get to the senior component of that, can I interject? So, you know, is, um, you talk about the divide generationally in the current city council versus you're trying to bring this amazing new perspective. Are, how has the party supported you? Have they, have they not? Are you being embraced? Are you being encouraged? Are you being obstructed? What's the, what's the reception been like?
So that has not been a really big factor in this race because these elections are nonpartisan. And also most, I'm pretty much all members of the city council identify and are registered as Democrats because we're an affluent white suburb outside of Boston. That's to be expected. But, um, yeah, like the, the Democratic Party doesn't make, you know, endorsements or throw their support behind people, obviously individual people that are associated with that do. And I've been lucky to have, you know, the support and endorsement of half of our city council, numerous community leaders on so many issues, whether it's housing, racial justice, environmental stuff, things like that. But yeah, I mean, I think I've gotten, you know, a really exciting outpouring of support. And a lot of people who are excited to sort of embrace this new generation of progressivism, which gives me a lot of hope.
Ah, yeah. Happy to hear that. Sorry to interject with, so the senior piece.
Yeah. So this was a, this was really important to me because I think something that I think it's very important to show is that there will be experiences and every elected official has a responsibility to do this that you don't personally endure and that you don't identify with. that you don't personally endure and that you don't identify with. And for me, I'm not over the age of 65. I don't understand what it means like, what it feels like to need to downsize your home, but not be able to afford to do that. But lucky for us, there are community leaders, probably all across, you know, the country and whatever city or town you're in, who do know and have been advocating for this. And so I made a very concerted effort early on before I announced it, as I was developing everything to seek out, you know, local advocates, including, for example, the Chair of our Council on Aging, to talk about what are issues, you know, that our senior population deals with? How can, you know, elected officials serve as an ally to make those things happen? And how can we do it in a way that, you know, feels authentic and honest and not sort of like you're checking a box because it makes you look good on your website? So yeah, I think making that effort on all sorts of issues, you know, whether it's housing or, you know, COVID recovery. I think it's important that you identify who is being most affected, who is already advocating for that change because chances are there are people and groups doing that already. And then having, you know, their input directly influence, you know, the policies and the priorities you produce.
Right on. Uh, amazing. Yeah. Maddie, Godspeed. I can, you know, I can't wait to talk to you again and call you councillor person. Incredible. Um, rinallyfornewton.com. Um, please go make a donation, sign up. Like I said, share her socials, share this video. Is there any, you know, and please come back anytime. I, you know, I appreciate what you're doing. You know, you're very inspiring and, you know, Godspeed on March 16th. Uh, if you're in Newton, by all means vote March 16th, right? Is there anything policy-wise that we didn't hit on that you want to touch? I'm happy to have you back anytime, but anything?
Plug, super quick for my affordable housing platform. So this is perhaps probably the most important issue in any city council race in Newton. Be, for, for a plethora of reasons. Right now and for the past few years, it's because our city is undergoing a huge overhaul of our zoning code. We have a very outdated zoning code from the 1950s, um, that produced a lot of residential segregation. We have a very dark history of segregation to confront the construction of the Mass Pike Highway through our historically black neighborhood. And there are now efforts to sort of right those wrongs and make Newton a more affordable place to live because right now it's not. And because of that, you know, people of color and immigrants and young people cannot afford to live in our city. And, you know, people my age, you know, get priced out and then asked, you know, why they don't move back here after they graduate. And we can't let that continue. And so I think addressing our sort of housing shortage and our affordable housing crisis is probably one of the most important things on my list. And I think particularly what's really important to me is that we sort of use every tool in the toolbox, similarly to addressing climate. The overhaul of the zoning code is a big one in filling in our missing middle because in Newton, what we have is sort of big apartment developments that have gone in recently. And then we have sort of these big sprawling single-family homes and we don't have anything in between. And that's where a lot of this middle income housing can come in, but it also comes from publicly subsidizing actual affordable units for low-income families with children, people formerly experiencing homelessness. Actually, you know, putting our money where our mouth is, creating things like a municipal housing trust to build the homes, drive up the supply and drive down the, the demand. And so I think what's really important is that we sort of always use every tool at our disposal to, you know, produce more housing, to generate housing affordability and to do it in line with our environmental and our transit goals. Because they can all complement each other if we do it right.
Right. What are the biggest challenges to that? Is there like an entrenched real estate lobby? What, what, what's the?
It's not so much an entrenched real estate lobby here in Newton. There are a few main sort of very big obstacles. One, I think there's just a lot of NIMBYism. There are a lot of dog whistles that people like to throw out, which are really unfortunate, saying that, you know, we're compromising neighborhood character or, you know, we're going to look like, like we're somewhere else. And then things like that, that you know are just coded racist rhetoric. Because they, you know, are afraid of change. And so that I think is a big obstacle. That's, you know, fueled a lot of, you know, misinformation and people sort of distributing, you know, just blatantly wrong information to the public. I think in addition to that, ridiculously high land prices are another big obstacle. In that, you know, developers and builders who specialize in affordable housing don't want to build here because it's so expensive. Our permitting process is way too long and they just know that it's not an attractive place to build. And so there are a lot of different obstacles that sort of, sort of play together, that sort of create an environment that's very hostile to new housing. And there are a lot of things we can do about that, especially in our zoning code in terms of, you know, building in sustainability requirements and making sure that, you know, the new housing we build can, you know, has tiers that are for certain, you know, percentage, percentages of AMI. Um, and making sure that we do it in a way that's very thoughtful and, you know, makes sense for how Newton is laid out. But also that's bold and understands that, you know, we don't build housing for people who live in Newton already. We build it for the people who don't live here yet. Um, and that's something that I think is really important. And that is rhetoric that we should embrace because I think it's not, you know, this, you know, this dangerous thing that we don't want to say. Because Newton needs to be a more diverse and welcoming place. We love to say that we are, but we're not. And, and I think that housing is probably the number one way that we work to get there.
Amazing. Yeah. Thanks for sharing that too. Uh, absolutely incredible. Um, you know, the people in Newton will be blessed to have you on their city council. I, you know, you have this fire and you can tell when someone is passionate and cares and, you know, you are that, you're the embodiment of that. So Godspeed. Uh, you know, I can't wait to, to, to watch you do what you do. Rinallyfornewton.com. Like I said, please go make a donation, share, share, like, follow, retweet, et cetera, et cetera. I'm going to close with, uh, your campaign video. Again, Election Day is March 16th. Tell your friends in Massachusetts. Um, I'm going to share your campaign announcement video. It's about two minutes. You know, a nice little profile piece. And, um, yeah, thanks for taking some time to chat with me.
Yeah, thank you so much for having me.
Come back anytime. I think I, you're a superstar. Please come back anytime. So, uh, thanks for talking to me. And, um, I'm going to close out on your campaign video. Stay safe, Maddie. Thank you.
Bye.
I grew up on a quiet street near a beautiful river with neighbors who care for and look after each other. I got a great education and I was surrounded by people who taught me the importance of leadership and of standing up for the right things. The city of Newton gave me that and more, and I'm not the only one. Newton has given so much to so many of us. But now we live in a time when we face many serious questions about the future. And there's one question I ask myself over and over. Who are we if we only keep those opportunities to ourselves or reserve them for just a select few?
My name is Madeline Rinaldi and I'm running for Ward 1 City Councillor at large.
I'm running because I see not just what Newton is now, but what it can be. A leader, a model for other cities and towns to follow as we take on the challenges of this historic moment.
I see a Newton that uses every tool at our disposal to achieve true housing affordability. A city that opens its arms to people of color, to young people and to immigrants.
I see a Newton that is a municipal leader on climate, especially at giving everyone equal access to things like dedicated bike lanes, solar power, electric vehicles and clean public transit. I see a Newton that's a national leader in reimagining public safety. A city that makes every person feel safe and protected by a public safety program that reflects our priorities. I see a city government that doesn't just represent its young people, but which advocates for our needs. I believe that if we want young people to be engaged and active members of our community, we need to make it easier for them to live here and to access the resources that they need.
That's the city I believe we can achieve together. And if we want Newton to be a leader in the future, it needs leaders for the future. And I'm here to stand up and lead.